Good morning, everybody.
Good morning.
It's 10 o'clock, and this is the regular Commissioners' Court meeting today. Thank you for being present. The judge is out for today, so I'll be presided. So I'll call this meeting to order. Everybody in person, okay, for the acceptance of the judge. Item number two, the pleasure of the meeting.
I pledge allegiance to the flag, the United States of America, and to the republic which stands by my nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Any public comments, Your Honor?
There's none, Your Honor.
Item number four, approval of a true amendment.
Would you approve?
Motion to approve.
Second.
Moved by Commissioner Pena, second by Commissioner Perez. Any discussion? Is that all those in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All of those saying aye. Motion carried. Item number five, the approval of land release.
Land release, yes, I recommend so too.
Would you approve?
Second.
Moved by Courtier.
Second.
Moved by Commissioner Perez, second by Commissioner Pena. Any discussion? Is that all those in favor, signify by saying aye. All of those saying aye. Motion carried. Item number six, approval of claims.
Yes, claims of the marine, I recommend my approval.
Would you approve, Your Honor?
Second.
It was moved by Commissioner Pena, second by Commissioner Perez. Any discussion? Is that all those in favor, signify by saying aye. All of those saying aye. Motion carried. Before we go into the reports, is anybody here that needs to come to court or court?
Commissioner May.
Yeah, go ahead.
Good morning, Commissioners. We have several items on the agenda. We thought we were going to be joined by Mr. Daniel Silva from the RGP Partnership, but he got stuck in traffic. So I told him that we could handle this for him. On your agenda, number 14, we have a resolution to approve an item, sorry. Item 14, sir.
14.
Yeah, 14. And it's on page two.
Item number 14, as a discussion of action, approved resolution supporting the Rio Grande Valley Partnership, RGVP, regional marketing and cooperation effort of one region, one voice to force economic growth, jobs creation, and community development.
Correct, sir. Good morning. And so we're here before you today because we have been working with the Rio Grande Partnership that handles a lot of the marketing and promotion for the valley on a four-county effort that is intended to bring support for job growth and for business recruitment. And we've been working with them for quite some time, but this year they decided to formalize that relationship with resolutions of support. Cameron, Willacy, Starr, and Hidalgo are each being asked to approve a resolution. I think Hidalgo was finalizing theirs today, if I'm not mistaken. All the other counties have already approved. We just, we couldn't do it because today was the first time we could bring it before the Commissioners' Court after we received it. So in part, the resolution supports the efforts of the partnership in the economic growth and job creation and community development. It also recognizes that regional economic development is necessary in order for us to make a compelling case that the Rio Grande Valley is the right place for people to invest. In addition, it is asking us to endorse the Rio Grande Valley Partnership as the regional economic development market and entity, which they already do, but this will formalize that. And finally, it will allow Starr County to participate in some of the initiatives that the partnership brings forth. They're not asking for any financial contribution. What this basically asks for us is in kind, some of our time, and the foundation essentially has been doing this on behalf of the county, being that we do the economic development for everyone. And so this Friday, these resolutions, as well as a compact of cooperation, will be presented to Governor Greg Abbott in a regional summit that will take place Thursday morning.
Would you approve?
Second.
Is this moved by Commissioner Pena, second by Commissioner Perez? Any discussion? Is that all those in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All of those saying aye. Motion carried. Do you have another one there, Ruth?
We do, sir. We have 15 and 16, but if you allow me, we'll start with 15. 15, is discussion impossible? Oh, you need to read that, sorry.
Okay. Discussing possible action on tax abatement for Mireles Investment LLC.
Correct, sir. Last month, well, the, August, in July, we brought this to, we had already brought this to the Commissioners' Court, and you had approved an abatement based on what the investment was and the expected job creation. I think there was a little bit of confusion because we had multiple things on the item, so we needed to bring it back to you to get this item actually approved in session since no action was taken in executive session that day. And so we'll need approval for this. This is for the development happening south of City Hall. As you're entering, they're developing 40, about 45 acres in that area.
Do you want to approve the tax abatement at this time?
We are, because we're, and this one's already under construction. They had thought we had.
What's the tax abatement on?
We're doing, they're investing right now. It's about $10 million on a, one portion of it that they're doing now. And the abatement that was discussed and approved was doing a three-year abatement at 50%.
50% for three years only?
For three years only, yes.
And what about the, not three years?
That's all, yes. That's what we've been doing, yes. That's what, when we do the different ones is because they're all doing over like $100 million.
And it stays at that percentage throughout the three years?
Yes. Yeah, it will, it will not change. And then once the three years lapse, that concludes the, that concludes the agreement.
Motion to approve, Your Honor.
Second.
Is this moved by Commissioner Perez, second by Commissioner Perez? Any discussion? Is that all those in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All of those saying aye. Motion carried.
And sir, we have one last one, number six, number 16.
Item 16, discuss the possible action on a tax abatement for Falcon Lake Storage LLC.
Yes, sir. We, this one actually is allowing the Starr County Industrial Foundation to begin negotiations. This item has not been brought to the Commissioners' Court just yet. We expect to have details completed by next Commissioners' Court. We're just preparing and asking you all to give us authority to begin discussion so that we can present the project. It is a, it is one of the new battery storage projects that is being done. Most of these projects are right now in precinct two, but there is one working in precinct one, and there is one working in precinct three, and there is two working, three working in precinct four. So we have quite a few more to bring to you. By the end of Q4, the Industrial Foundation is happy to report that the county will have attracted exactly $1 billion worth of new investment between the fiscal year of '23 and the completion of '24.
Where does this closure end?
This particular one?
Just a battery.
Yeah. Their battery storage, their battery stor, yeah, their battery storage. No, no, no. Their battery storage, and they're, some of them are being used for the wind projects to actually store their project, but the new ones that we're working on are actually going to be battery storage facilities that are going to tap into the grid to actually help the state and the ERCOT when they need help that there is over-usage. So we're excited that we continue to attract new and diverse kind of projects, but more importantly, that they're helping grow the tax base. And so we're not proposing the acceptance of the agreement today. We're simply asking you to allow us to begin negotiations so that we can bring those details to you in the, hopefully by the next Commissioners' Court meeting.
Motion to approve to allow the Industrial Foundation to start negotiating with Falcon Lake Storage LLC.
Second.
I have a question.
Yes, sir.
Rosie.
Uh huh.
Is it like the ones on San Antonio and Eisenhower?
San Antonio and Eisenhower, similar to that, yes. Similar to that, but in a much larger, much larger scale. These range between 30, between 30 to 10 to about 30 acres, but there's one actually in that vicinity that we're having conversations with, but it's a little bit further north on Jump Road.
Is it the same company that's there?
No.
No.
Different one. Different one. Each of them, each of, each of the, my apologies, but each of these companies have brought to us individual projects. And so right now, we have yet to have one company come to us with multiple projects, but we suspect that that may happen very soon because they're starting to learn that this, this is a really good place for them to set up, set up their business.
Do I have a second?
Yes.
Is this moved by Commissioner Pena, second by Commissioner Perez? Any discussion? Is that all those in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All of those saying aye. Motion carried. Is that it? Anything else?
That's it, sir. Thank you. We appreciate your cooperation, and we look forward to bringing you many more of these projects as the year progresses. Thank you.
Okay. Well, we go back to the regular agenda. Is there somebody else?
Do you all want to see that right now? We're fine. Because they're out, they're from out of town.
Number eight. Number eight?
No. No, that's not number eight. Yours is number 13.
13?
No one go ahead and say 13.
Good morning, Commissioners and Starr County team. My name is Javier Dominguez. I am a transportation planner at the Rio Grande Valley Metropolitan Planning Organization.
But we need to read the.
Oh, sorry. Yes.
I'm sorry.
Jumped in, sorry.
Discussing action to accept memorandum of understanding for MOU between the Lower Rio Grande Valley Development Council, the Rio Grande Valley Metropolitan Planning Organization, Transportation Policy Board, and Starr County.
Great. Thank you. So it is with great enthusiasm and appreciation that I come before you today. I came last year when we were putting the application for this opportunity together, and essentially just wanted to come and bring the great news that with our partners from Federal Highway Administration, we have gone through several drafts of our grant agreement, and it's finally been approved by our partners at the federal level and signed by our fiscal agent as well. And so I'm here today asking for Starr County to sign a memorandum of understanding between us, the Lower Rio Grande Valley Development Council, who is our fiscal agent, so that we may proceed with the inception of this plan. This is a, we won a grant for $250,000 for the Rio Grande Valley, so we're going to be covering portions of Starr, Hidalgo, and Cameron County. And we're going to be looking at which of the proven safety countermeasures, FHWA, our partners at the federal level, have 28. Which ones are most relevant to our area? We will be creating a subcommittee, inviting our planning partners to help us with the selection of those proven safety countermeasures, which range from pavement friction management, rumble strips, roundabouts, improved safety at pedestrian cross, at grade crossings with pedestrian and vehicular traffic, and also hopefully select potential pilot program, projects, which we can use to, for an application for implementation funds. So I came a year ago, and I presented that we were given the advice from the feds with a notice of funding opportunity to use the 2019 American Community Survey Population Five-Year Estimate. The population for our region was 1,176,555, Starr County. We decided to divide the local match by population. Starr County had just over 65,000 people, which comprises 6%. And we received a letter signed by the judge on Monday, September 12, 2022, agreeing to provide a local match of up to $3,500. After meeting with our planning partners, that number's actually gone down. So today, we're here presenting a memorandum of understanding for an amount of local match for $3,000, and hoping that Starr County Commissioners' Court approve it again so that we may proceed and move forward. We understand that the grant is for $250,000. For it to be truly regional, we might need to implement it with some of our planning funds, which we'll be looking at doing so as well. But for next steps, throughout this month, we'll be visiting Hidalgo County and the cities of Harlingen and Brownsville to get their local match commitment as well. And then we will be starting the RFP process to help us select the consultants, and we will be doing a year-long study to complete this plan. They gave us three years to complete it. We want to complete it in one year so that we can still make, they have five years of this program essentially, and we want to make sure that we apply for implementation funds so that we can sort of implement or construct some of the pilot projects that we identify in this plan. And so with that, I am able to answer any questions at this time, if you guys have any.
What was the match?
The 3,000. Yes, sir.
And, and your, and your part?
So we, so we got federally $200,000, and we need, since our, our planning funds come from federal dollars, we cannot match federal with federal, so we need local match commitment from our planning partners. So we're getting $36,500 from Hidalgo County, and the other remainder is going to be split between the city of Harlingen and Brownsville. And we looked at, to us, the most fair way to get that would be by population, and so that's where we came up with that number.
And what were the safety measures that it covered?
There's 28 on the website, so I just listed a few examples. So for example.
I wasn't here last year, so.
No, no, yeah. It, it's just, like, for example, if you want to implement roundabouts, traffic circles in some areas, doing a study as to like a pilot project, so how that would, how we could implement something like that, maybe something a little bit simpler would be variable speed limits, having signage on roads that show people their speed limits, as well as if, in some areas, like if you want to cross the street, and it's a pedestrian-heavy street, implementing median safe haven so people can cross and stop and wait to continue crossing the road. And so this is part of the IIJA bill that was signed by the president, and there's dozens of grant programs that came with that bill, and this one is one of the grant programs that they really tailored, and they want NPOs to apply for. And so that's why we went and submitted that application. So in order to get construction dollars, you need to have a comprehensive safety action plan where you identify how you're going to implement some of those proven safety countermeasures. Another great example are rumble strips. As you see, like when you go into San Antonio and you veer off the street, you get that rumble strip that kind of gets loud and wakes a person up. And so that's just another one. Speed humps versus speed bumps. Instead of having one large speed bump across the road, you have it broken into segments wide enough for emergency vehicles to go through without having to slow down, but narrow enough to allow the emergency vehicles to go through, but wide enough to slow down personally occupied vehicles or regular vehicle traffic for everyday users. And so kind of looking at the pros and cons of all of those, and obviously, we want a subcommittee formed, and we will be inviting our, anyone from Starr County who would like to be part of that, that subcommittee, so that obviously you guys are the experts in your area. You might know what would be more relevant to you guys here, and what would probably be best used, and maybe certain areas where we can implement some of these proven safety countermeasures. And I can provide you a document with that. There's a total of 28 of them. So some of them are more geared towards emergency vehicles, some of them are more geared towards bicycle pedestrian infrastructure. So, yeah. I will say that in the MOU, it does state that the LRGVDC does kind of need a nest fund, so to speak. So in the MOU, the memorandum of understanding, it is asking for the 3,000 within 30 days upon signature. Just want to be transparent, just so that we can have some funds in to start the RFP process. It is a reimbursement program, so they will reimburse up to the $200,000 amount, which is a federal share as we proceed. And so that's how the next step is going to happen. And if we get all four MOU signed this month, we will start the RFP process in September. That takes anywhere from 30 to 90 days on how fast we're able to secure an RFP, and we'll be going to our Transportation Policy Board, which meets the last Wednesday of every month in Wesaco, to have the final selection for the consultants so that we may proceed and start the plan. From that point.
Do we have the MOU? Do we have the MOU already?
Yes, I sent a copy of it.
It should be in the back.
Yes, sir.
Would you approve, Your Honor?
Second.
Is this moved by Commissioner Pena, second by Commissioner Perez? Any discussion? Is that all those in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All of those saying aye. Motion carried.
Thank you.
Thank you, sir.
Would you approve, Your Honor?
Second.
Is this moved by Commissioner Pena, second by Commissioner Perez? Any discussion? Is that all those in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All of those saying aye. Motion carried.
Thank you.
Thank you, sir.
Would you approve, Your Honor?
Second.
Is this moved by Commissioner Pena, second by Commissioner Perez? Any discussion? Is that all those in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All of those saying aye. Motion carried.
Thank you.
Thank you, sir.
Would you approve, Your Honor?
Second.
Is this moved by Commissioner Pena, second by Commissioner Perez? Any discussion? Is that all those in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All of those saying aye. Motion carried.
Thank you.
Thank you, sir.
Would you approve, Your Honor?
Second.
Is this moved by Commissioner Pena, second by Commissioner Perez? Any discussion? Is that all those in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All of those saying aye. Motion carried.
Thank you.
Would you approve, Your Honor?
Second. Is this moved by Commissioner Pena, second by Commissioner Perez? Any discussion? Is that all those in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All of those saying aye. Motion carried.
Thank you.
Would you approve, Your Honor?
Second.
Is this moved by Commissioner Pena, second by Commissioner Perez? Any discussion? Is that all those in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All of those saying aye. Motion carried.
Thank you.
Would you approve, Your Honor?
Second.
Is this moved by Commissioner Pena, second by Commissioner Perez? Any discussion? Is that all those in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All of those saying aye. Motion carried.
Thank you.
Your reports are in your packets, gentlemen. You should have for the month of June. Next Commissioners' Court, I will have the one for July. And if you look at it, we have a surplus. We have a surplus for June of $19,458 with 8 cents. That's for the gas. And then, is there any questions? Or are there any questions for the gas report? The transfer station, do you have that report there? That one, we're in the.
Transfer station.
What was that, sir?
Transfer station.
Yes. And that one, if you look at page one, you have a summary of what's going on there. Yep. Yep. Thank you, gentlemen. Thank you, thank you.
Never seen, next collector.
Good morning, Commissioners. Good morning, Your Honor. This is my report for the month of July, and you have it in front of you. If you can follow me, please. Our total delinquent collections just for Starr County were $315,581 with 77 cents. The total delinquent collections same time last year were $509,433 with 40 cents. There was a total delinquent collection of $193,851 with 63 cents, less than last year. Since 2022 became delinquent as of July the 1st, the projected collections remaining are 92%. Projected collections that became delinquent on July the 1st were $1,424,512 with 17 cents. Also, we have collected 81% of the projected delinquent collections. Projected delinquent collections remaining are $552,622 with 36 cents. The collections made through the American Rescue Plan were $35,334 with 65 cents. Also, the motor, the motor medical department has collected $58,184 with 46 cents just for the month of July. Do you have any questions?
On the, the current collection taxes, you have collected 92% of the projected that the judge had budgeted.
Right.
So, how much, the, the other 8%, how much it totals in a dollar amount?
The remaining balance or the remaining amount?
One million?
The projected collections between delinquent?
The remaining balance is $1,424,512, 13?
On the delinquent?
No, 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 no. Current tax.
On the current?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay. The remaining is $1,424,512 with 17 cents. Out of the $16,832,000 that, or the 86% of the projected collections.
So at this time, the judge projected that we were going to collect 80%. Am I correct? 80%?
80% of the 100%. Right.
So the 80%, we're at an 86. So we already surpassed the, by 6%.
Right.
Am I correct? Okay. 6%. I'm a judge, we have.
Say, you say.
So we're over 86. So we're, we're 86%.
82 or 86?
86 or 82, I mean.
It's 86.
86%. De los 80%.
Right.
Am I correct?
When the judge says 92% are the projected collections. So what you're saying don't matter.
So we're at 92, I mean.
It's. The 80%.
De 80%. Vamos en 92%.
As of June 30, 2023, the tax office has collected 92%.
Of the projected collection.
Of the projected collections.
Which was at 80%.
Right.
Okay. The judge prognosticó 80%.
See, but of the 100.
Of the 100%.
And this is 92.
The 80%. Or no? De la 100.
No, no, no. The judge, they say this collection that she has here is at 92% of the values that the judge imposed. Not of the whole value, not the whole value, yeah. We still got 8% to comply with what was expected to.
8%. The 80% that he prognosticó.
Yes, sir. So it's $1,424,000.
So what you're saying 8%? No, ma'am? $1,424,000?
But what is already, ya pasamos, ya comenzaron de 5, bueno?
Right.
So we're collecting.
We are collecting only delinquents.
We're short?[1644.54]
We went short. Como cuánto estaríamos short.
I got one million four hundred and.
I don't have, uh, it's out of the, it's a one mil, one, one million four hundred and twenty-four thousand. That's the remaining. That's the projected remaining.
According to her report here, they had. Projected collection remaining is one million four hundred and twenty-four thousand five hundred and twelve and seventeen, sir.
Right.
Ya son delinquentes.
Eso lo que falta para conectar el ochenta por ciento que fue.
But since of July the first, we, it became everything delinquent.
We did not collect what the judge had projected.
No.
Am I right or wrong?
Not, not a hundred percent.
The lady.
Right.
Came under.
Any other questions? Thank you.
Good morning, Commissioners. You should have my report in front of you for the month of July. I'll just highlight the ones that are kind of important. Records management collected five thousand six sixty-five copies that were due to the general fund, two thousand one seventy-six eighty. Our records archive collected five thousand four seventy-six. And total that was given to the general fund was thirteen thousand seven twelve fifty. We've been pretty consistent every month, twenty-eight, thirty thousand, thirty-two thousand. We should be done with the project at the end of this month, so we can pay the remaining four hundred and seventy-six thousand through the ARPA funds. Any questions? Thank you.
Your Honor, Commissioners. This is the revenue report for July two thousand twenty-three. USA Solutions, fifteen hundred. Marshal Transport Services, seven thousand seven hundred and fifty-four. Marshal Medical Services, one thousand two seventy-eight. Marshals Housing and Inmates, one hundred and forty-five thousand two fifty-five. Hidal County Insurance Office, two hundred and one thousand three hundred and fourteen. For a total revenues of three hundred and fifty-seven thousand one hundred and one. The count for August the second was eighty federal inmates, one hundred and eight Hidalgo inmates. Starr County inmates at eighty-eight for a total population of two seventy-six. The average count for Hidalgo was one oh five, and for the Federals was eighty-five. From this same time, two thousand twenty-two, July, to two thousand twenty-three is an additional four hundred and forty-seven dollars. And this puts us at ninety-three point five-three percent of the projected revenues of four million. So we're a negative two hundred and fifty-eight thousand eight hundred and thirty-four thousand from our four million projected revenue.
But you still got two months to go.
Yes, sir.
I'm supposed to native.
No, no, con la falta, ya, ma'am. We're almost there. We're almost there. Yeah, we got two more months. So we, we, we should, we should do good. And the reason we did three fifty-seven this past month was because we were paying in the jails, we had to cut back on the, on the inmates a little bit to shift them around. But we're back to regular, to the regular population. Also, on a different note, the jail was inspected last month, Commissioner, Commissioner Fuentes was there, uh, Mr. was there? The jail was inspected la, last month by surprise, and we passed the inspection with no, with no deficiencies.
Awesome.
So that's my report. Thank you.
Letter H, Sheriff's Department.
Good morning. This is the report for July two thousand twenty-three. The revenue is two hundred and one thousand one hundred and twenty-four dollars. And we show an increase of twenty-five thousand forty-five dollars for the month of July two thousand twenty-three compared to the month of July two thousand twenty-two. And we also show an increase of one thousand one hundred and seven dollars for the collections for the month of July two thousand twenty-three compared to the month of June two thousand twenty-three. And we have the currency exchange excess of fifty-three dollars and forty-one cents. And for the total grant collections for July is two hundred and one thousand one hundred and seventy-seven dollars and forty-one cents. Do you have any questions? You don't. Because I did, I did send it. Okay. I did send it, I have proof.
Good morning, Commissioners. You have my report for the month of July two thousand twenty-three. If you could just follow along with me. The ending balance for the general fund is at four million four hundred and eighty-two thousand seven hundred and twelve with, with seventy-eight cents. The balance, ending balance for the Road and Bridge is at four hundred and sixty-one thousand eight hundred and one thousand eight hundred and one with ninety-seven cents. The enterprise funds, the total balance is at one million two hundred and seventy-eight thousand nine fifty-three with twenty-four cents. The Drainage District, the balance is at three million seven hundred and seventy-two thousand seven forty-two with ninety-seven cents. Which brings a grand total ending balance, of all balances, to nine million nine hundred and ninety-six thousand two hundred and ten with eighty-six cents. Are there any questions, please? Put a cash money, sir. Yes, sir. Thank you.
Letter H. Call the auditor.
Good morning, Commissioners. I'd like to present to you the unaudited Auditor's Monthly Report for the month of July thirty-first, two thousand twenty-three. Page one, I present the cash summary for July. Ending available balances for General Fund. Cash amount, four million two hundred and twenty-seven thousand seven hundred and eleven. Road and Bridge, available cash balance, four hundred and thirty-one thousand nine oh three. Payroll clearing account, one hundred and fifty-one thousand eight hundred and eighty. Page two and three, I provide the budget summary for, under the General Fund. Year-to-date revenues collected, seventeen million seven hundred and twenty-seven thousand eight hundred and eighty-two. I move on to page four and five. Budget summary expenditures under the General Fund. Year-to-date expenditures, seventeen million seven hundred and fifty thousand four hundred and eighty-one dollars. A total of, um. Of excess of expenditures over revenues of twenty-two thousand five hundred and ninety-nine dollars. I move on to Road and Bridge. Budget summary. Revenues year-to-date collected, six million three hundred and forty thousand two hundred and twenty-two dollars. Expenditures year-to-date, total of five million seven hundred and sixty-nine thousand nine hundred and seventy-six dollars. With an excess of revenues over expenditures, five hundred and seventy thousand two hundred and forty-six dollars.
And what percentage are we supposed to be right now, Miss, expended?
I don't have that number available right now.
Like in eighty-one?
I think we're at eighty-one right now.
Eighty-one, we should, our department should be at an eighty-one percent expended.
I think so. We got two more months, yes. I move on to page seven. Budget summary for Enterprise Funds. International Bridge has an excess of revenues over expenditures, three hundred and two thousand four hundred and thirty-six dollars. Gas System has an excess of revenues over expenditures, two hundred and forty-eight thousand five hundred and thirty-three. Transfer Station has an excess of expenditures over revenues, two hundred and thirty-two thousand eight hundred and sixty-nine dollars. Special Revenue Fund, ARPA, has a five million five hundred thousand three hundred and sixty-six dollars available for budget expenditures. Last page, on page eight, I have the debt summary for the county. Total debt outstanding, one million one hundred and seventeen thousand eighty-eight dollars. That concludes my report. If there's any questions? All right, thank you, sir.
You should have it in your packet, or they put it there on the side. We had already brought this item a month ago. And you all asked for it to be tabled, and I, it's back again. We only have one bidder. And I added this item for your approval, Your Honor. Thank you.
Done, although some jurors signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed, same sign. Motion carried. Item number nine, discuss take action on approving resolution for executive department of housing committee affair program.
That is correct, Commissioners, and it's just a, it's a resolution so we can start applying for the TGHCA. Right now, we don't know the amount. Go ahead. Right, right now, we don't know the amount of the grant, but because we are on a reservation system, so they won't let us know until the application is complete. Of course, this application is pending regarding some, uh, this application will be pending regarding the compliance that the Auditor's Office has to submit to TGHCA.
Now, I was gonna ask the other part. What's, what's lacking, ma'am? Why doesn't the clear house being cleared too, so we get to apply for the grant?
The criminal court has accepted, we have the single audit available.
The what?
The criminal, uh, Audit Attorney House has accepted the, becomes audit.
Because the issues have been there from the house?
No, it's, uh, the Fed, it's in the Federal Clearing House, but back in two thousand twenty, there was a compliance letter that was submitted to the Auditor's Office. It needs to be, it needs to have the corrective action plan. The Auditor's Office, as of last week, it has not been submitted to the TGH Compliance Center. I don't know, I know I met with Letia, emailed her, and she was gonna look into it.
Who is supposed to submit that?
Uh, the letter was, um, the previous auditor did respond on that letter back in two thousand twenty. I'm not too sure what was the issue that they did not receive it, but I did reach out, I think they specified to somebody there, but they haven't responded back to me as to what we need to do.
And that's all we need, uh, once that is cleared through the Compliance Center, then we can. That is correct. That is correct.
So, what do you need, a motion?
Yes.
See?
Yes.
Motion to approve.
Again.
Move by, by Commissioner Peña, second by Commissioner Perez, any discussion? Done, although some jurors signify by saying aye. All opposed, same sign. Motion carried. Item, item number ten, discuss take action on approval for submitting a credit, credit line application with site-prorentals?
That is correct, Commissioners, what it is, it's an application that we're gonna submit for the Starr County Sheriff's Office. They were already awarded a grant at the beginning of the year. The funds are already in the account, and what it is, they just need to have this application, this credit approval, for, it's basically on their part for invoice purposes. But we do have the funds already in our account, and we just need this to be approved, so we can get our, and what it is, it's for light bars. Light bars that were awarded, and those light bars are used for like emergencies and crime scenes for the Starr County Sheriff's Office.
Any discussions? Done, although some jurors signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed, same sign. Motion carried. Letter number eleven. Discuss take action on accepting memorandum of understanding. Agreement between Cameron County, LRGV, TPDEF, Stormwater Task Force Partnership. Motion to approve. What, what is about, I mean?
It's just a memo, LMOA, memorandum of agreement between Cameron County. For Stormwater. Nobody here to explain, I know?
Well, I know that the judge sent a letter back to them.
Accepting it?
Yes.
Motion to approve, Your Honor.
But, but this is in regards to the, to the floodway and?
Yes, and that's to be part of, to partner with them. That way they can request federal funding, so that our area can also be covered.
More counties attached, either more counties.
Move by Commissioner Perez, second by Commissioner Gata. Any discussion? Done, although some jurors signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed, same sign. Motion carried. Item number twelve. Discuss take action to approve resolution for the appointment of a representative to the Rio Grande Regional Water Authority Committee.
I believe, uh, in your packet.
Does it start in there?
There's, uh, if you look at the resolution. I think the judge had submitted a name, of course, we do want to.
The MOA?
The resolution, right after that. I think. That's, of course, what you all.
Well, we have a judge that's quite competitive, Tony Garcia, first.
Check it.
Move by Commissioner Perez, second by Commissioner Perez. Any discussion? Done, although some jurors signify by saying aye. All opposed, same sign. Motion carried. Item seventeen. Discuss take action to approve donation in the amount of five hundred dollars from Mariano Garza Junior for Starr County precinct three-foot pantry.
No, 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 no. Ay!
Crazy two, motion to approve.
They're putting attention, check it. No, 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 crazy two.
Verge, you make your, or actually, correction, crazy two. Motion to approve.
Check it.
Move by Commissioner Perez, second by, motion Perez, any discussion? Although some jurors signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed, same sign. Motion carried. Item eighteen, through.
Thirty-six.
Thirty-six. Thirty-six.
Please, on ballot number thirty-two.
Thirty-six.
No, thirty-seven is on project correction.
Correction.
Thirty-seven, thirty-nine, four, four-one, so project corrections.
From item eighteen to thirty-six. There are motion to approve the budget amendment?
Is there an order?
Yes, sir, is there an order?
Motion to approve, Your Honor.
Check it.
Move by Commissioner Perez, second by Commissioner Perez. Any discussion? Done, although some jurors signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed, same sign. Motion carried. Items thirty-seven, thirty-eight, thirty-nine, forty, forty-one. Are budget correction.
Yes, sir, there is.
Motion to approve, Your Honor.
Check it.
Move by Commissioner Perez, second by Commissioner Perez. Any discussions? Done, although some jurors signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed, same sign. Motion carried. It is, uh, item forty-five, you have both, you take attention on item forty-one, forty-three, forty-four, forty-five. We need to secure five one one zero eight seven. And five five one zero seven four. Five five one zero seven four, and five five one zero seven four, again, this is to discuss. Insurance. Economic development and order of salaries. Overtake claims, and, uh. Okay, right there. And it's eleven twenty, eleven twenty-eight. Item, uh. Forty-three. Order of salaries.
Motion to approve, discussed in executive session, Your Honor.
Check.
Move by Commissioner Perez. Second by Commissioner Gata. Any discussion? Although some jurors signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed, same sign. Motion carried. Okay, uh, item forty-four is, is no action. It's a OSA, AHO, bidling, just informational. And forty-five.
Motion to approve, Your Honor, as discussed in executive session, Your Honor.
Move by Commissioner Perez, and second by.
Perez.
Commissioner Perez, any discussion? Done, although some jurors signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed, same sign. Motion carried. We, we need to make, go back to item, uh, on the, on the, on the contract of the housing. Which is.
Item eight.
Item what?
Eight. Eight.
Okay. We need to, we need clarify, we have, uh, we need to amend the motion to accept the contract either one or three years. We need specify if we're gonna go with one or three.
I, I make our recommendation to approve a one-year, Your Honor, based on what they're giving us at the margin of error, they're giving us a plus-two, minus-two. That's for the diesel. I make a motion to approve a one-year contract, depending, next year, we can always reapprove, we can redo the contract. Motion to approve for a one-year. That's my suggestion.
Check it.
Move by Commissioner Perez. Any discussion?
Commissioner Perez did a second.
A mended motion?
amended motion for a one-year contract awarding, what was it? The Republic. The Republic Transport.
Second by Commissioner Perez, any discussion? Done all those, if you're ever signify by saying aye?
Aye.
All opposed, same sign, motion carried, motion to adjourn.